Maybe I'll ask Rebecca. Okay, Daniel. Thank you, Daniel. We have a public hearing, but before we have the public hearing, I'd like to start the meeting off with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, to the true government which stands one nation, and my God, in this little liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all brave men and women fighting all over the world for democracy and freedom. Thank you.
So, we have a public hearing for local law amending Chapter 155 zoning, a local law amending Chapter 105 noise, a local law amending Section 67B town code building permits. So, anybody have any statements on those local laws? Okay, none being had. Oh, James, come up, please.
James Garofalo, Marlboro. Since you didn't understand me the first time, I thought I would go over this again. Noise meters give readings maybe eight to sixteen times a second. The purpose of defining a period in which the reading is taken is not to catch people, it's to protect people against getting ticketed for instantaneous readings. Now, the building inspector, the police, the judges may at this time interpret the law one way, but when new people come in, it may be misconstrued. I actually had a case where that happened. Twenty years later, the view of the law was that this was a maximum over the period, not a LEQ-10 or an L-90. It was an L-maximum, the maximum reading within that period. That was the interpretation. And I think what you need to define is a minimum period in which the reading will be taken, maybe two minutes, five minutes, whatever you want to decide, and whether that's going to be an average over that period, or define exactly what that is to reach your decibel levels. The other thing that I'd like to bring your attention to is I think that by having a potential jail time assigned to a first instance, even though many judges may not give that, I think that what you're going to end up with is the few people that do get tagged will bring in lawyers and will potentially fight it, or at least try to get it resolved in a way in which they're not going to get jail time. I can see giving jail time if the decibel level is 120 or higher, where it's actually hurting people. I can see that. I can see that for multiple infractions, since each day is a different infraction. If they got one ticket 11:00 p.m. and they got one at 1:00 in the morning, that would be a second infraction. So, I think that you should consider putting something into the law to make it clear that the jail time is for some very serious crossing of that line in terms of violation. And it could be that the police may have to go out there several times, but I think that having that in there with respect to other laws where people can do pretty horrible things and are just getting fined and are not seeing potential jail time, that I think that that may be the other part of this law that you may want to reconsider.
So, it says up to $1,000.
Yes.
So, it doesn't mean it could be $1,000.
I'm not worried about -- most people aren't going to be worried about the money. They're going to come in with a lawyer because they see the jail time. Okay? If you're spending even a day in jail, that's a lot more than $1,000 for most people.
Yeah.
Okay? That's -- I don't have a problem with the $1,000. I have a problem with not putting a little bit more limitations on what the jail time or what the prerequisite for giving somebody jail time would be. Just like I would have that same concern if people going 10 miles an hour over the speed limit were given jail time for just going over 10 miles an hour over the speed limit.
That's what I was just going to say. I think it's up to a judge's determination more than...
Even a speeding ticket carries 15 days in jail or a fine. We don't decide that, the judge does. Same thing here. We don't decide the sentence, the judge does.
Right. No, that I understand, but I think that for something like this, there should be more written in here to define that jail time.
I think that's up to -- we run across this all the time, what we think is very offensive, and it gets in front of the judge, and the judge, you know, it's almost like a slap in the face to the person that did the, you know, gave him the citation or whatever. Of course, the judge decides on what the penalty is.
Right. And that's why, you see, I'm not disagreeing with the second offense.
And people could bring their lawyers in. You know, people have the right to do that.
I'm disagreeing simply with the first offense, not with the second offense. Okay?
But I think it's written very -- I think it's written nicely because in a way, it's like exactly what you said. It's given the judge the discretion. We're saying you got $1,000 fine or imprisonment, not to exceed 15 days. So, that gives the judge the authority to say, you know, was this a violation that warranted imprisonment? Maybe, maybe not. Was it a violation that warranted a $500 fine? But that's for the judge to decide. I think we're giving him the option of either or.
You can certainly agree or disagree, and you can certainly agree or disagree with how I'm suggesting that the recordings be done, but this is basically what I'm stating. And it's not a question of how the current people may interpret it. I have to look at -- I think about how the next people are going to interpret and how it's going to be read directly.
But we're not interpreting that section, the judges. And every judge that comes in here is going to interpret a law differently. We know that from locally, nationally, everywhere. A judge is going -- a different judge is going to interpret the same exact law 10 different ways. That's just the nature of a human being.
And that's why the readings, I'm saying, should be more specific so there's less determination.
What's your opinion about that, Jerry, or Tom?
What do you do when you go out and somebody complains about a noise? I'm sorry, Howard.
That's right.
You go out with the decimal reader or the police do, right? Basically, a lot of people hope it's calibrated the right way and the reading is true. So, they go out there and they -- I know I've had it done at my house. They go out there with the reading, they wait a couple of minutes, they get a reading, then they wait again, see if the sound...
You average it or...
No, no, you look for a positive reading, but chances are you're not going to get it, even at the property line.
That's why we reduce the decimal. That's why we reduce it because...
If those decimals are based on my experience, you're not going to reach those decibels at the property line unless it's absorbently loud.
Right. Because it's at the property line.
The rodeo.
Right, right.
I went to the rodeo thinking that it was definitely a violation. I could hear it from my house. I'm two miles away. Went to the property line, didn't even come close.
Right. So, do you -- but I guess what James is saying is, is there a time, a length of time that you hold that there to say, does it hit it in two minutes or three minutes or...
Based on the experience, it's one reading.
But you -- one reading for how long?
You just turn the meter on and the number comes up. However long it takes the meter to read it. Pretty simple.
Yeah. My experience is...
Well, I guess I'm saying, I guess what James is saying is, say you're playing loud music, but at the time you do it, it's a lull in the music, and then all of a sudden it goes back up. Maybe is it, do you stand there for three minutes? I don't know. I'm just, I know what he's getting at.
Yeah, I know what he's getting at too, but you can't have a police officer stay there for an hour.
But along the side, Scott, if a song is playing and we go to meter it when this song switches tracks to another song, is that what we're saying, is there's no noise there?
No. You're going to wait until you try to do something...
Well, my -- the thing is, is from what he's describing, it's an L-max, but if he has his meter on for two minutes, it's the maximum reading. It's that one sixteenth of a second reading that would qualify. And what I'm saying is, maybe it should be an average over a minute or some distinct period that is defined as a minimum, and that maybe it's an L-10, 10 percent during that period has to be over that limit, or an L-90 or whatever you want, or an average over that one minute, but there should be a minimum time and a limitation on how much it has to be, what part has to be over.
I got you. I think the board understands what you're getting at.
We just have to go by the practical experience of the guys in the field, and you're not saying that it's really necessary. You're going out there, you're trying to measure it, and if you don't, you can't measure it, you can't measure it, doesn't -- you give it a reasonable amount of time and...
There is no time in the current law that we use. We've always just run out and measured the noise based on what the meter said. Do we stand there for 15 minutes? No. I'm sure we don't.
But...
And to be honest with you, I don't even recall ever there really being a noise like that. Have you? I mean, you are...
No, hold on, Jerry, hold on. I don't want no private conversations going on. So, James, are you done?
But what I'm saying is, by not having this, there may be businesses that choose not to call.
I think you're loud and clear. Don't repeat yourself. I understand what you said.
We got you.
Doc, will you want to come up and state your name, please?
My name is Ron Tattelbaum. We had discussed this before about the chief's concern about not being able to measure it, and we had in the prior code, if you can hear it inside the house with the windows closed, that was too loud, because that gets around the difficulty that the chief is going to have, which he's already explained, with the decimal reader. And I think either or, either it's 55 or if somebody hears it in this house with its windows closed, it's too loud. So, I would recommend putting that back in.
(laughing).
Only because of Jerry's concern, the chief's concern about the, about his inability. You said you heard the noise two miles away, and you couldn't get up to, I think it was 75 at that point, but that's unacceptable.
I also disagree that we should put that section back in because then it's too ambiguous. What bothers you may not bother me.
It's not a question of bothering. It's not a question of bothering.
Yeah, we went over this thing, Doc.
Yeah, I know. We have.
We beat this to death. This is -- so, that's your opinion.
Yes, my -- we can beat it to death again if you want. That's my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is it on the sound again, James?
Yeah, it's a good question.
Come on up.
My separate question is, who gets the ticket? You have, say, a party house, a whole bunch of people in, they're making noise. Who gets the ticket? The owner, somebody at the house, all of the people at the house? Who ends up getting the ticket? Somebody takes responsibility?
I think Tom would be the owner of the establishment, right?
The owner of the property is always responsible there.
Always. It's the owner of the house, the owner of the property.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, sir. State your name.
My name is Jason Hudak. I live on 6 Riverinal Drive, and I'm in agreement with Ron as far as perhaps putting that back in. Two weeks ago, Buttermilk Falls, and the gentleman who lives up on the old Evelyn's View behind Ron, I could hear every, it was 9:00, 10:00 o'clock at night, I could hear every word of every song in my house at 10:00 p.m., 9:00, 10:00 p.m. I'm in bed, I'm woken up by this. I mean, I really think it should be put back in. Why should I have to be woken up at night from someone blasting music? I mean, perhaps on the Buttermilk side, if I recall correctly, wasn't there something where he was supposed to erect some type of seashell to keep us from being disturbed by the music, some seashell? It goes, dates back years. I don't know the exact reference.
Yeah, I think back in the day that they required a shell.
Right, and it's not there, and it's supposed to be a permanent structure, so why...
What time did they shut down? I think there's a requirement...
At 10:00 p.m. They shut down at 10:00, but I mean, I have a five-year-old. I don't stay up late. I'm in bed by 9:00 o'clock. I've called a few times about the noise, and they've come right over, and they've addressed it, the police department, and I'm grateful for it, but I mean, I don't think I should be listening to this every word of every song. I mean, I don't have any -- next time I call, I'm going to ask the police officers to come in the house, come walk in the bedroom, and listen to the music. I mean, it's just too loud to sleep at times, not all the time, but someone has to be keeping up on the -- I mean, again, the decimal reading, you're saying that we're not going to get an accurate measurement. I'm right across the street from where they have the tent set up, so...
I sympathize with your, you know, your problem. So, always relate it back to my own problem, okay? So, I have a gentleman that's a neighbor, and they shoot firearms.
Okay.
So, on occasion, it would sound at my property line like I was in the middle of a battle, an actual battle. That's how loud it was.
All right, but is it at 9:00, 10:00 o'clock?
And they use guns that the target, when they hit the target, it explodes. So, then you get the dynamite effect, right? So, then you get the (burp) and then (punch). So, there was a time, it doesn't happen that frequent now, but I called the police, they would come, and they would be at the line, and it would occur. And they say, you know, it's 500 feet away, really does, you know, we can't, the reading is, we can't really do anything, but I could go and talk to them. And they've done that. They've talked to them quite a bit. But there was a period of time where we couldn't enjoy the property, we couldn't enjoy anything on the property, we all had to go inside. Basically, the kids ran around with earmuffs on. It was really pathetic. But I guess what I'm saying is, other people have rights, blah, 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 but you know, that's why I think lowering the decimal in this new noise code will help quite a bit. I mean, we lowered it quite a bit from 65 to 55, I think.
Right, through the week and then back to 65 on the weekend.
But you know, sometimes things, I don't know what to do in that circumstance. If they shut down right, Tom, at 10:00, I mean, and you've had the police there, maybe at this time it'll read 55 and somebody has to go talk. We have to see how the new law is going to...
I'm saying we consider putting it back in, leaving it the way it was, because the way it was, if I had the police officers come to the house and listen to it, then maybe they could reach out or go over to Buttermilk and say, hey, you know, it's too loud, you got to turn it down. And we were just over there, we could hear in his bedroom, man's trying to sleep.
I'm confident we're doing that now, though.
Can still do that, right?
You go on a complaint, I'm sure they're just not listening to your side of the story. And I'm speaking because I don't read the reports all the time, so I don't know, but I'm assuming we would talk to the complaint, you in this particular case, regardless of how loud it was or wasn't, listen to your side, and then go tell Buttermilk we've got a complaint.
Sure, and I'm very friendly with Robert and CJ, and I'll text message them first before I even call. If I don't hear any change in the decimal level in the house, then I will continue to call you.
That would be standard for just about anyone's complaint, regardless of how loud it was or wasn't, or for these bothers over there or not.
But just reconsider, that's all I'm saying.
You know, and I sympathize with the people around Buttermilk Falls because this is not the first time. I mean, it's, we went over the whole site plan about having the shell in there to, they seem to...
Gotten away from that.
Yeah, no, it seemed to, they adhere now to the time, I think. I don't hear too many besides yourself.
(inaudible).
Yeah, yeah.
But what's, I mean, what would be the harm of keeping that section in there? What's the negative of keeping that section in there? What, if you can hear it, it's too loud? All right. It's too ambiguous. Just ambiguous, that's it?
It was my opinion that it left too much leeway for him.
You get a lot of calls.
An annoyed neighbor or two neighbors that didn't get along, they wouldn't be using this to use us to annoy each other. Oh, I can hear his music in my house, sign a statement, now that guy's got to go to court. Next time that guy's in court, it's just too light. Anybody could say it's too loud. It's not that the officer isn't going to have to witness it. Should be maybe that way, but it doesn't necessarily have to. What if the music is stopped by the time the officer gets there? It just leaves, it's too lenient to allow people to just use it at their own free will, just to say it's too loud and it's annoying. I think there has to be some, something more solid like we came up with, a noise reading. I don't know that 55 is a number. It's a great number to start at. That's what I would like the board to consider, but if it doesn't work, we revisit it again.
Let me clarify that too. I read it as, we went from 75 to 65. From 75 to 55.
55, I don't think.
Is it 55 on the weekend?
On the weekends, it goes 65 from 75.
Right.
Well, here it's from 70 to 55 on A.
Oh, I thought he crossed that part out, that's all right, okay.
And then on B, it's, I think it used to be 75, and now it's 65.
65, all right. I thought that was crossed out, that's all right.
So, we're done with, yes, something again, Jim, about noise? I don't want to spend all night here, but come on up. As long as it's not redundant.
I just want to suggest that you change the wording from at the property line to at or beyond the property line, because at the property line may be a shaded area from the sound cone, and you may hear it louder if they move away from the property line. So, rather than it reading specifically at, and it also determines that they have to determine exactly where the property line is, to leave it as at or beyond the property line. Thank you.
Thank you.
But beyond could go to the other side.
So, is there anything else? Okay. So, that being said, I'd like a motion to close the public hearing on local law amending Chapter 155 zoning, a local law amending Chapter 105 noise, a local law amending Section 67B town code building permit.
Yeah, I'll make that motion and recognize the input we've gotten here tonight, and as Jerry said, we can make amendments as if this doesn't work, I guess, so it's maybe a work in progress, but I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. The local law amending Chapter 155 and zoning, you'll see resolutions not exactly for that because we have to wait till the county planning looks and reviews, so they don't meet until August.
Which ones is that out?
All the zoning.
Oh, okay. I wondered about that.
You know, the height of the building, the...
Yeah, yeah. I wondered about that, okay.
Changing different from AG to or AG-GY.
That's the, also, it's not in here.
No, it's not in here. It's a resolution. We're going to have a resolution on the acceptance of Chapter 105 noise and 67, the town code building permit. And also, at the last meeting, I forgot about the code change with the private roads, so that's in there today.
So, we just have two, right?
Yes.
The roads and the noise.
But we're going to do the private road one, too. That's a resolution and to go out for a public hearing.
Yes.
Okay. That being said, where are you? I need a motion to approve the agenda. I think we want to amend the agenda. Thank you very much. I'll get to it. Isn't that correct? We want to add a resolution for the...
We want to add a resolution regarding bond.
Okay. So, I need a motion to amend the agenda to add resolution. I forget what number it is.
Resolution number 59. I make that motion that we amend the agenda to include resolution number 59 to authorize the town to pursue a bond.
I need a second.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? None being said, so moved. Motion to approve minutes from the July 9, 2018 town board meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Ed makes that motion. I need a second.
Yep, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? None being had. Thank you. Authorize the payment of bills in the amount of $244,178.63. Need a motion to pay the bills.
May I make that motion?
Need a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That being said, we're paying the bills. Any presentations?
Did everybody sign it now?
Yeah, I did.
Okay. It's a great date.
Thank you, Howard.
The right date.
Comments on the agenda?
No.
The new businesses, Board of Assessment Review, open position. Our policy is usually we go out to advertise for that position. I also have a letter from Joel Tronkali stating that he would like to be reappointed to that. I'll read that during correspondence, but we usually go out to advertise.
So, we need a motion to advertise. I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? None being said, so moved. All right, workshop topic, sale of Tonvac, proposed new rec slash community center, high school across the crossroad, across crossroad, and the CXX crossing. So, Scott, you want to do a little...
You want to do the CSX first?
I could do anything you want, buddy.
Do the CSX first, and then we'll get into the building. And you're, thank you for writing that letter, by the way. Hopefully they...
I want you to arrange these things so I can do...
Next time, just tell me.
You have that letter?
I have it in it.
Oh, I got it. So, you know, we have in this problem with the CXX down at Milton Landing actually has road closed. The board gave me permission to have Ron Blast look into it. So, the lawyer for the Department of Transportation, Donna Hintz, H-I-N-T-Z, I just asked her out plainly, what's our chances of having a second crossing? And her reply was, I'd like to talk to your lawyer. So, on that...
Right to the point.
Right to the point. So, on that, I asked the board if they would give me permission to have Ron Blast talk to her. Anyhow, so, that being said, Ron did talk to her, and Ron said, what's our chances? And our chances are zero to none, so she was pretty frank with that. But then I think Ron started to take it beyond that, and so, I put a halt to it because he was looking at, he wanted to look at stuff that was already looked at by Mr. Rusk when we bought the property as far as deeded, that belongs to us, that crossing and the land under it. So, basically, I just asked him to write a letter, and then when he wrote the letter, I changed the letter a little bit, too. So, the letter is to CSX, and it's addressed to Greg Hart, who is also the Department of Transportation, and to Donna Hintz. And the letter states, the town of Marlboro is the recorded owner of an at-grade crossing of the rail line along the west shore of the Hudson River. The crossing was procured by the town of Marlboro to provide access to... The crossing was procured by the town of Marlborough to provide access to Riverside Park at Milton Landing. In good faith, the town of Marlborough engaged in three-party discussion with representatives of the New York State DOT and C S X to examine potential upgrades of the at-grade crossing. Remember that, Howard? The discussion ended up in suggesting the town that it relocated pedestrian crossing at grade crossing to the south of the existing crossing and established additional security measures at the existing crossing for emergency use only. Subsequently, C S X advised by email to Derek Mahaly dated June eighteen, twenty eighteen, that C S X would not approve any additional pedestrian at grade crossing irrespective of safety upgrades. The town is disappointed in this abrupt withdrawal by C S X from the three-party discussion addressing safety issues. The Doc Road Milton Landing Crossing at M P six eight dot one eight is unsignalized, except that it include a non-standard crossing bell that sends sounds when a train is approaching. There are no gates or flashing, flashers. Currently, due to track repair, the state of the rail line prevents us of the town deeded right for crossing emergency vehicles to render aid to those using the town park at Milton Landing or Marina emergency. C S X has removed the wooden planking which served the vehicle crossing and replaced it with item four, which impedes crossing by emergency vehicles. A safety hazard has been affirmatively created in spite of the town's deeded rights. With respect to C S X, the town requests that these safety hazards be remedied immediately. The town also requests that the prop gates and hazard alerts be installed, and the crossing restored to its original at-grade condition. With respect to the New York State DOT, the town requests any assistance which this state agency may render to solve this safety hazard and to explore and to establish reasonable safety upgrades to existing needed crossing. So thanks to Danielle, we sent that out to three, we sent that out to the C S X guy, to the DOT people, to Robert Rohr, Lou, Lou who's the safety guy, Franchella, and Dennis Doyle. We'll see what happens. So, with that, my mouth got dry.
They just don't wanna play ball. Play ball, which is kinda odd, like, well, I mean, not odd, because they've done it before, that they come down, they promise stuff, and then reneg on it. So it's not like they haven't done it before.
Yeah, so the whole thing is, they lead us down this path. They have three guys that are pretty knowledgeable of the railroad crossing on grade. They come up with this idea about a net of pedestrian crossing a hundred feet, which we agreed it would be great. It's all electronically crossing. Actually, Lou gave us some good examples that had occurred, that they actually implemented. And then, you know, they lead us down this road. I did, I did the whole report, did everything they wanted, and it was denied. And so then, you know, you know the rest of the story. So we keep on going, you know, you know. I think the next step, if we don't hear in a couple of weeks or so, is that we have to get Schumer or somebody involved that's, that has a little more pull than local people, and see what he could do.
My question, too, is the same thing as I asked last week. So we're moving forward on the, on the Milton Landing and the pier, and everything that we wanna achieve down there. And a big part of it is this, happen to have a crossing, a pedestrian crossing.
It's, and we have the crossing.
And we have it, but.
It's not up to standards.
I mean, so if we get to the point where we actually are gonna build, rebuild this pier, will that give us more of a?
I think so.
Hopefully more of a reasoning for them to come down and really do something?
More leverage, I think, yeah.
A little more leverage, and maybe that's when we could get, hopefully before then, but get someone like Schumer, Gillibrand, or someone involved. Again, the state's already given lots of money, half a million dollars to this landing. I would think the taxpayers of New York and the state in New York would wanna get some bang for their buck out of the five hundred thousand dollars that they gave to purchase the property.
We've invested more than that, I mean.
And exactly, there's been more invested in that.
Almost two million in that whole area.
To me, it baffles the mind.
Keep on going. So we wrote the letter, and we mailed it Friday, right, Danielle? And we mailed one out to Lou today with his correct address. So we'll see what, how they respond to the mailing.
I mean, it's a safety issue, that's the bottom line.
It's a safety issue, and that's, so at this point, we've, you know, we said, okay, the new pedestrian on-grade crossing, you don't wanna allow us, but we own this crossing, we want you to bring it up to the safety grade.
That's right.
And that's all we're asking.
Exactly.
Have we got any response, I mean, they put item four down there, which is not really adequate. So have we complained at a lower level to anybody? Have we heard anything about the fact that they're gonna, well, just put that temporarily, we're gonna put something in there more permanent? Nothing?
I haven't heard. The only thing is that they said they was gonna put something temporarily and address, they have to put some more track in. I don't know when they're scheduled to do that, but they're gonna do that down, down the road, so to speak, and put the new track in, then rebuild the crossing, the on-grade crossing.
They give us no respect.
No, no idea. And, you know, the whole thing is, they, during our correspondence, they said, look at such and such law that you could go to the web and look at this railroad law. And in their own law, it says, when they do a crossing, they usually would finish within three to four days. And this has been months. So we brought that there to their attention. Your own law says that you should be fixing your crossing, and still none. So.
Well, we could bang our heads on this all night. If we can't.
Bang our heads on this for a little while.
So let's, so I'll give an update where we're at, and then the board's gonna have some discussion on this workshop topic on the rec slash community center. We got some plans back from Phil Bell, we forwarded them to, everybody's got them. But I think we, we all agree that there's gotta be some modifications to that. But before I go, let's just go on the Tomvac side. So we all know about, two months ago roughly, right? We got an offer that majority of the board, I would say, has accepted as an offer of three hundred and eighty thousand. In the meantime, for these past two months, myself and Al, along with Gerald Camatos, is that how you say Jerry's last name?
Camato.
He represents us from Vanderwater and Vanderwater. And he's been going back and forth with Thomas, James Thomas, that's their attorney. And me and Al from the get-go have very, been very adamant about, we don't necessarily have to sell this building. We, you know, again, majority of the board would like to see the building sold for purposes of getting a commercial property on tax rolls. But we don't have to sell this property, and there are stipulations that we asked them that we wanted in this contract, and that's what's been taking so long. A lot of them were down to the nitty-gritty, but there's a couple that just popped up again, and I'll just give you a brief summary where we're at with these. I'm not gonna go into all of them, because most of them have been worked out. But number one is a section four in the amendment that basically now the purchaser is asking that he would have the right to cancel the contract if there's a public opposition to the project. Well, we know, and he's known from day one, that this is subject to permissive referendum, and that there's a high likelihood of this going to public referendum. And he's known that from day one. So to now put something in the contract that says, oh, someone is gonna petition it, I'm gonna cancel the contract, doesn't make sense. So we strongly gave back to him, look, if you wanna commit to this, you're gonna commit to this. If you can't commit to this, then we're gonna move on. Alright, so that was our stance back on that request, that we're not gonna accept that request. So you gotta commit, you gotta commit. Another section in there, you know, a lot of the stuff is, he wants us to, he wants us to pay for, like, title fees, searches, all these things. And we're like, no, that's your responsibility. The town is not gonna expend money on doing these things. If you are serious, again, about purchasing this building, which you told us you are, that you're gonna have to expend the money to do these things. We're gonna give you full access to the building, to get your engineering in there, your architects in there, whoever you like to come in there. But it's gonna be on your own dime. We, as a board and for our taxpayers, are not gonna be spending that money. Because again, we made it clear, we do not have to sell this building, but we would like to. So, there's a few other things in there, but those are the two biggies right now that have come up. So again, we're still just waiting back from him. This has been sent back to Mr. Thomas with our responses. And there was a meeting that Jerry wanted to set up with them, and had not heard back if they have got a date. Because we have not heard back to actually maybe attend that meeting, which would be the right thing. So, we're in limbo with that. And look, as far as I'm concerned, the longer it goes, then it gets closer to a normal public election, if it goes to that. And that's good for us as the taxpayers. We did have Colleen and Danielle check into the board of elections, what it would cost for a referendum vote without going to a normal election. It's roughly about five thousand dollars, give or take. Depends on how many ballots we actually would request from them. But I would say five thousand, a pretty accurate number, what it would cost the taxpayers. Unless we get to a November ballot. If it goes on a November ballot, then there's no extra cost, really. It's just added to the ballot that's going out. So that's where we are at Tomvac. When we get to the new rec and community center, so you know, we've had Phil Bell, the board agreed to have Phil Bell get some drawings together so we could eventually submit this to the school district, and pursuant of hopefully obtaining property from them, and some kind of worked out, however we could work it out. But we would actually physically wanna own at least an acre and a half, two acres, that we would wanna put this on. And they have six acres there, and there, it would be some trade-offs to that, like, we would be doing some stuff for them and lieu of us having this building for us, but they actually would have some use in it, and of course, a softball field that they wanted to have. So you guys all got the memos? I'm gonna give you a bigger printout of the main one. So we originally told him to base it on, you know, one-sided gymnasium. This would be the perfect time if we had our actual presentation board. Because we could actually put it up here and show you.
There's an extra copy here, maybe?
It's really hard to show, but if someone wants to take this, I'll give you the big copy, if anybody wants it. Tim? But we've had him base it on a barn look. Now, I don't know if the boards, you know, we wanted to try to make it like a, like our community's a farming community. Do we wanna have like a big, open building? I'm looking at it, I'm not so sold on the barn building now that we see it. I don't know what you guys think.
I like it.
Yeah, you like, I mean, it's alright. What do you think, Eddie?
I could live with the front, the side view.
The side view, remember, that's gonna be the view you're gonna see from the road, right?
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know.
That's the road side. This would be the front side, if you were, if you were at the high school, at the baseball field, looking at it. That's what you would see.
That side I could live with, but this side I can't.
So I talked to Phil Bell for about a half an hour today. He said, changing that look is not an issue. He says it actually would be a little, maybe a little less expensive, because the trusses would be a little less expensive if you go to a more traditional look. And then the outside stuff, he said, that's, that's generic. He said, that, really not much. We could change that whatever we want. So I don't think there's a problem if we wanna go to a more traditional look outside.
Just a little more contemporary.
Contemporary look, we can change that. It's more of the square footage. This is a little under six thousand square feet now. I think it's fifty-six hundred square feet, he said. I think we might bump it up to six thousand square feet. But first off the bat, I mean, I, I think I put it in the email to you guys that, you know, he, he worked the downstairs. If you look at this here, this side is the upstairs, this side is the downstairs. And you can see in the downstairs, there's four stalls in the women's bathroom, three stall, no, five stalls in the women's bathroom. Three stalls in the men's, three urinals, five, this, this way too many. It's just way, way, way too big. We don't even have that many in the park. And of course, this is for the downstairs, which would be looking out at the fields. And this would be used for community. So if you have a baseball game, softball games, other thing going on, they actually have a bathroom now to use that's close by. I told him today, this could be almost cut in half, at least, to maybe two urinals, two urinals and two stalls in the men's, and maybe even less, maybe one. And then maybe two, two in the women's.
I don't know if you wanna go less with, if you have a base.
Well, I mean, in the park, just to give you a thinking, in the park, we have one ADA, in the men's room, we have one ADA bathroom stall, and one regular stall. And we have two urinals and two sinks. And the women's, we have one ADA and two, two other stalls. So if you base it on that, I said, you know, the park's gonna have just as many, if not the same, if, say you had an event, probably. So if it can handle that there, it can handle it here. So I think we could definitely, he said, that's not a problem, we could cut that down. But where he lacked on, if you, if you look at it, there's hardly no bathrooms upstairs, which is where it's really gonna be used. Like, that's the community center room. That's where recreational things will be going on, and seniors would be there. So I told him, you know, we can't have seniors walking downstairs, honestly. So, he, he thought the same thing as I did after, you know, talking to him about it. And just to give you an idea, so he said, like, you could bump it out, instead of going fifty-six hundred, we go to six thousand square feet. We could bump the front of this building out a little, to give us some more square footage, and maybe even here, so we could put two storage areas on here for the gym.
Is any of this on the same level as the?
This is, if you look at the picture, this is all up here, right here.
Okay, so the bathroom, so you wouldn't have to go downstairs.
So this is all upstairs, and then this would start the downstairs.
What's over in the downstairs?
Downstairs is this area, right here. That, that section here is here.
Alright.
And this is just, this would be nothing. It would be under the basketball court, it'd be great.
This is the gable roof here on this part, this part is flat.
Correct, and then this is the, that straight roof, yep. Yeah, so if you look at this picture here, this is the area where the bathrooms and. And then here, it's just nothing, because it's under, you gotta have a solid floor for the gym, he said. And then this is storage, and this is the actual community room up here.
Here.
Yep. So if you're looking at it this way, this is the downstairs, ground level. This is the community room upstairs. And then this is the gymnasium. If you're looking at it from the ball field, high school, this is grade level.
So to get from the community room over to the gymnasium, that's no steps?
That's all here, because there's a whole parking area over here, so you would just come in. But if you're downstairs and you wanted to walk up, you'd walk up these stairs and get in. So, but there is parking up here, if you see in the, the main picture, that's the parking. But he did wanna put stairs in if someone wanted to walk up, for whatever reason. So, my suggestion to him was, you guys know like how Saint Mary's Hall is, you kinda walk into the foyer. The bathrooms are right on the left, in the foyer. So if we bump out that wall a little, we can make bathrooms left on either side, and in the center, we could have a storage office building. And then like, it would kinda be like a, like a, I would say a coatroom, or, or if it's a rec thing, someone's standing here with an open window, right? And they would, okay, the gym's, gym's yours today, or, and then you would have a storage or office behind it. And this would be open with a door to get in. This would be the women's room, this would be the men's room, or vice versa. So now, if you look at it, because in the previous plans, you had, don't really weigh from the gymnasium to get into any of the bathrooms. You'd have to come through the foyer and walk through. So now, everything's here. So if you're in the community room and the gymnasium rooms both being used, now you're not interrupting each other. You're going in the foyer, and everybody could use the same bathrooms. And in here, I would suggest three stalls for the women, two for the men, it's kinda just like the, what we have at the park.
So underneath there is the other bathrooms or?
Underneath would be the other bathrooms, but we would, like I asked him, we would significantly reduce these. We would reduce this concession stand, because I'm not sure how much it would be used, but it would be, I think, almost cutting it in half. And then we would gain more storage down here. Because I think a big part of it. And then we would gain more storage down here. Because I think a big part of this too, just so you guys know, is believe it or not, we are in deep um need of storage, right Jerry? So, a, a lot of this, we really need, uh, he, Jerry needs a lot. We have so many files that are uh at the old building that are, shouldn't be where they're at right now, but they are. Um, we also have the um there stuff that has to come out of there. We have other files at Tomback that, we have a lot of needs for storage. So this would actually help us tremendously in that aspect. Um, so that's my, that would be my suggestions. I mean, the kitchen looks like it's a good size. We need a storage area here. We would bump this out here. I would think put a storage here and a storage here for the gymnasium. And then the door would be up here, just like this.
What's this here? Entry light?
This is the downstairs. So this would be a garage, this garage door here or whatever it would be. And then right next to it, this would be the stairs. So I don't know if this is just I think it's part of the storage. See how we have storage? I think it's, I think it's still part of this. It's still part of this storage here. Just that he has the line in between it. Yeah, I think that's all storage here. What, another door? Yeah, that's a door into that storage room. So this is the, the main, this is the, from the main level. Then there's a storage room. They go to a big storage room. Storage, storage. We could probably almost take another and make this another storage room and then reduce this and then reduce this. So, he definitely said he could rework it.
And you were telling, the gym that's portrayed here is about the size of this gym.
So, yeah, the gym here is, is like, it's like thirty-nine, almost forty by sixty-nine. So it's almost forty by seventy. So it's roughly about the size of this area that we're in right now.
It has suspended basketball things or what, that would be?
Right now, it has nothing in it. So that would be us. Do we wanna, whatever we want to put in it, you know, do you want to put a basketball thing?
What about also, they didn't play volleyball?
Volleyball.
Does it have, doesn't have a stage or anything like that?
No stage. So, again, it's just one big open room. So, which is good.
All purpose room.
All purpose room. It could be, it could also be used for bigger events, right? Doesn't necessarily, like, so say we decide to have an Easter hunt in our own building sometime. This, I'm just saying, if it's here, just say down the road. By down the road, we need a space to go somewhere. Now, this big open room could be cut up into any way we want it, right? That's the ideal thing.
What kind of kitchen is this? Is this a kitchen for a small, for like senior citizens' needs or is this a kitchen?
Anything. Twenty-eight by fifteen, so it's a pretty good sized kitchen.
Could you put on a roast, roast beef dinner out of that kitchen if you wanted to?
I think this kitchen, if I remember, is, is about the size of the one that we have in, at the pavilion right now. It's about that size, about roughly the same size.
It's not the same size as the kitchen we had here at the elementary school. Not to that degree.
It's probably as, it's probably as wide, but it's probably not as deep.
Community groups, churches that don't have their own facilities may want to put on a?
Oh yeah, absolutely. I mean, but I, I think, I mean, that bathroom that he has in there, that I had there, that's not gonna be there. Um, so you know, you got the three, three base sink, you got the island, you got the, he's got the overhang for the stove.
The senior citizens do store a lot of stuff.
Yeah, that's why we got a storage room here. And then you're gonna, you know, hopefully that's big enough, twelve by fifteen. And also, I'm gonna, I was gonna ask him to if he's bumping this out, to bump that out to the same and then have two storage rooms here for the gym, right? So you pick up that space.
So in the gymnasium, we had hardwood floor, the floors like?
And we'll see how we can configure, you know, maybe in the, maybe in this, in this area, maybe there is more storage that could go here. Maybe we, we just, we don't do the bathrooms like I have it. Maybe it's I just did it freehand. I mean, however he thinks makes it work.
Yeah, it's a good question. What kind of flooring?
Well, the gymnasium, we originally told him wood hardwood floors, like a normal gymnasium. He says, obviously you can save on cost if you want. Like, you know how Middle Hopes is? It's got the concrete floor and it's just got stick down tiles. You could do that. Um, so it depends on the cost. That obviously would save you, I think a wood floor, I think Larry told us, they just did the one over in the Marlboro Elementary School, was about ten grand, I think he said?
A little bit more.
Maybe more than that. He said, so he, we have a good indicator of what it would cost. The thing is like this, is forty by thirty-six is the community room. Is that, what, how much can that hold, Tom? Forty by thirty-six? Is that big enough?
Fourteen hundred and forty square feet, not much.
Like what size is Tomback? I mean, the, the room, right, that they use?
Three thousand square feet.
Three thousand?
Forty by thirty-six.
So three thousand.
The actual room is? I mean, but
The width is fifty. Occupancy is ninety-six. That's probably why it's under a hundred.
Is this a solid wall here?
Tables and chairs.
Yeah. Which we could actually have to put doors.
Tables and chairs. It's under a hundred.
It's not very big, is it?
Ninety-six is pretty good.
But I was, I thought it was smaller than that.
I think seniors have like uh roughly every Thursday, maybe forty to fifty.
Ten tables and ten.
Right.
Four tables and eight.
Ninety-six, maybe not, not, not usually a hundred people, right? No. Not usually a hundred people.
You want to keep it or?
No.
Or you could?
They just raised the sprinkler requirement. It used to be a hundred.
That was three hundred.
This building, now it would require a sprinkler because of the Egress, like the Egress had a decent vision. I had to look at that. Once you reached a hundred, the sprinkler requirement came in, but the new IRC code is enough. But I'm thinking maybe you work him off the old statement by keep it at ninety-six, add an Egress board and one sprinkler.
What's the requirement now?
Three hundred.
Three hundred and one.
Three, what it?
It's three hundred. Unless you're going to three hundred, it's sprinklers and public occupancy.
So you could have three hundred, that's before you have sprinklers?
Yeah.
That's why at Tomback, we don't have.
The national code made it less restrictive than we, well, the New York code is always a bit more restrictive than any state. You're over the head in the game.
So why do you think though, as far as you said, it may still need sprinklers?
No, no, I'm saying that I think he
Oh, you're thinking he thinks?
He was using the old numbers.
Occupancy, by keep it at ninety-six, you don't have to sprinkle it because of what's happening. But the new IRC code, which has been an effect on it, it's raising occupancy levels, which is crazy.
Well, forty, oh this, what did I say? It's thirty-nine, what did I say? Forty by thirty-six.
Ninety-six people.
So forty is this width right here. I know that. This is forty. So that's pretty deep.
Maybe you could open this up. Maybe that adds expense, but so you could expand, add a community room into the gym if you wanted to.
Or just move it over and make it.
Or maybe it can have those uh?
Dividers.
But I mean, this is forty. That, that's wider than Tomback.
Right, but if you have the dividers in the middle?
That's definitely wider than that room at Tomback. No, I'm talking the usable space.
What's that?
Because, you know, you're saying three thousand, but that includes the, the back room where, that is, I mean, this definitely is wider than Tomback.
It feels a lot smaller, like, um, originally ceiling.
The original outside. We're having too many conversations going on.
You think the ceiling is a brick building, it'd feel rough. But those ceilings in that community room might definitely recommend minimal.
No.
Well, it's like the, the church where the senior citizens are now. Those, the real ceiling is probably two to three feet higher than.
No, I mean, I would like to see like at least ten feet, Tom.
Well, I would say maybe, I would put that myself, I'd say minimum nine.
Well, if I'm looking at this plan, I, I, I don't know if that's.
Well, he doesn't know the size, but I don't know how much that ceiling, you know.
But I agree with Al. What, if we put one of those accordion clothes and things there, and if you're a big event, you can open it up and you can have both of them together. I think that's the idea.
So that's my question. Who, who's gonna use, you know, senior citizens, obviously you're gonna use this. Who else is gonna use this? Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Brownies.
Yeah, sure.
Open it up to all those groups. And we're, we're not gonna charge them for this. Once you build it, you know, they will come.
Right, if it's nice and it's maintained well, yeah.
I mean, like Danielle could attest to it. We get people asking all the time for, do we have a room that rents?
All the classes that happen now are gonna, in Tomback are gonna be held here.
Yep.
And what else?
Actually, you know, the, the train station is getting some play too now.
Sure.
So, and I
That would be more for events.
I think uh he had ten round, Ed, for his birthday party down there. I think he had I think he had seven or eight round tables with ten people, uh, each table. And it was pretty comfortable. It was like eighty people. But then again, down there, there's no kitchen or anything, so you have the cage.
That's the difference here is you got
But he had a cage.
Kitchen, seniors wouldn't have it without a kitchen.
So are we gonna charge other groups?
I think we're, you're going way ahead of you.
Well, no, I'm not. Because I'm trying to figure out what, who's gonna use this. You're gonna have to design it for who's gonna use it.
Well, I think it's rented just like we rent all our other things, right? It'd be the three hundred or five hundred out of res, you know. I don't even think we have to even have out of residents if we don't want to, because this would be our
And we're gonna, and, and is it gonna be open during the day so that there can be spillover from the baseball field if they want to use?
The bottom part.
The bottom part.
It would be like the, kind of like the park, where the bathrooms would be open all the time.
There's a lot of logistics, right? Because who's gonna be the rec person? You need a rec person, right?
Right, you do.
To book the, whatever. Of course, we can't deal what we're dealing with right now.
That's another thing we gotta get. I mean, but that's something we have to do almost regardless.
We need a parts and rec guy.
Yeah, we have to, we have to get.
If we do this other stuff.
We have to do it regardless.
So there's a lot of things that have to be uh
Parking lot would be shared with the high school as well?
Figured out.
Uh, well, the parking lot is mainly for, is, is for, for this building, right?
But if somebody parks there for a
But if someone parks there for a baseball game, yeah.
Which is gonna be good because
Which they need.
Parking lot.
That's to be, that's one of the things when me and Al went up there with a representative from the school district. Their main thing that they really need is parking.
Have they looked at this?
Not yet. This is what we want. We want to give them the plan that the board is okay with before we give it to them. Um, again, they need parking and they would like another softball field. And that would kind of be the trade off for the property. That's in our view. I mean, it might not be their view, but that's our view.
So we would put in a softball field for the return of, the favor of the land?
Correct.
Yeah, he said they needed a girl softball.
Yeah, I can see that.
And, and if you see on the, on that last page, it fits in pretty nicely there. Now, there, obviously, there's gotta be some grading done there.
The flat spot.
Yeah, there's a hill there.
They get a cost on the field?
Obviously grading that needs to be done there.
Where was that thing? Over here?
Right there, you see it?
Yeah, that, that one. Okay, where was it? Oh, that's where they want it here.
Right there.
Okay. Here.
Right there.
But that's
Yep, and this is where the baseball field is.
Eventually.
Oh, they want a baseball field here.
Well, if they want one, they gotta build one.
They gotta build one themselves on that one.
But there's land there for them to do it.
Yeah, so it's right, it's right adjacent to the
But this is the one, this right here is what they're suggesting for the girls.
Yep.
We didn't get a cost on that.
They want us to do that in return for?
Scott, they didn't give us a cost on this.
So I mean, for that, it's grading.
This would be practice field?
It's grading and it's fencing. And then you gotta do the infield dirt. I mean, the good thing about that spot and the reason why we, we looked at it
It's flat.
It's flat and it's cleared already.
Not too many stone out props, but uh the top there is, you can see the stone.
The reasoning the school's been asking for this, just so you guys know from background, not that they're specifically asking for it, but I know their coaching staff and that part of it has always been asking for JV field. They have no, they don't technically have JV fields. Alright? They have uh mosh posh, they put together practices at the middle school or elementary school. They're busing kids now down. This would eliminating busing routes. Um, so they don't technically have JV practice fields. Uh, or fields for that matter. So, this is why they think this would be something that they could use this property for. Again, they would have people there. They would save on some busing. Uh, it would make it nice to have it all in one spot. Um, and uh, you know, possibly down the road also it could be a revenue maker for them. They could have some tournaments there. And that's why it comes into play of having some outside bathrooms and a little concession stand and more parking.
So, so I would suggest that during our discussions and what you talked about, have Phil Bell tweak it.
Yep.
And maybe at the next meeting, bring it back. Uh, when did the school board, are they out August? Do they need it all? No more?
Last Thursday in August?
Right there, right there, those windows right there. Yeah, that's the concession. This is a bit like, it'd be a garage door to the store. This would be the concession.
Twenty-three and twenty-four.
And these were the bathrooms. And then this was the upstairs.
Oh, okay.
But it's not
So we have?
It's not the first or third.
So this would be outlook.
Probably the twenty-third.
Now, I
Twenty-third of office.
I don't know what the cost would be, but it would be cool to add a deck.
Are we gonna?
Off the
Sunday.
I'm not saying now, but I think that would be pretty cool. Are we gonna get a cost on with the softball field that we're supposedly putting in? Is it a cost?
Yeah, yeah, of course. I mean, we gotta get that. I mean, this is conceptual design. Before we get, I mean, we know we gotta get the board of the school board to say, they wanna do this a hundred percent. I think
Yeah, but we need to have a cost of what we're gonna put in there.
But then once we say, once we know that, we could go ahead with some of the real cost number. I mean, we kind of, I mean, it's fencing and, and dirt. I mean, it's not really that expensive, but we know there's a cost there.
What is the sixth year metal?
Uh, we had told him metal. So, now we originally told him too, it's half up brick.
Brick, yeah.
And then metal.
Yeah.
Vertical.
Well, maybe at least in the front or something.
So, and again, he said we could change whatever we want.
Yeah, it's all the cast.
It's not like real brick. It's like the, you know, it's like the half bricks that they put on there. And then you put the vertical.
Yeah, I mean, it's all on cast, so it's almost changeable.
Okay. Similar to the storage building.
Similar to that, yeah.
Highway department.
So
So go, go forward and report next week if you get some more.
I will talk to Phil tomorrow. We'll get some of the ideas back to him and him and, he's also using a hero who actually did the work here with him on the, on the plans. So, they have a good idea of what we want. They just, they wanted to get something to us and this is what he originally came up with, but once we gave him the feedback, he was, yeah, absolutely. I understand about the bathroom situation and that and uh and we'll go from there. Now, Mike, I'm gonna go measure Tomback, that actual space. But I, I, when I first saw that, I thought that was a little tight too. So, we'll just double check on that. Alright? Anything else you guys wanna?
You're good.
You wanna deck off that up for it? Sightseeing, planetarium? No, I think it's, I think it's a pretty cool idea. It's just
How many parking spaces?
It was a pretty big, right? It was like a hundred or not?
So, you know, that brings up a good point, Scott, uh, about the, the school, right? So we found out with the Frank's Cartel, it's two hundred and fifty thousand, that actually we, we could get that money if the school leased the property to us, but not at a long term lease. It'd be like ten year increments. But in actuality, we want to really own that. So
And if we own it, then that Frank's thing is still good. It's our property.
Yeah, yeah.
But I mean, I think from our, I think, I don't know what the board thinks, but I, I might, I, I would not wanna, I would want to own the property, right?
Well, I, I think what happens with the school also with, like what happens with the town, they would have to have a permissible referendum.
Everything, it's subject to permissible referendum. I mean, but it's a trade off. I'm not saying we're exchanging monies, but of course, it's always subject to permissible referendum when you're dealing with properties or buildings, right?
No, I'm just saying that uh I just, I, I, that's the only thing I could see where it's a little dicey, you know, between the school and the town.
Yeah. Yeah, but I mean, it's like anything else. They, if they pass something as a resolution, it's up to the public to then they want a petition that they don't want to have a trade off of property that don't cost a taxpayer or anything, really, in that, in that case, right? If they exchange a piece of property with us in exchange for us putting a softball field in and then letting them use bathrooms that we put in. Um, I think that's a win-win for the public, right?
Sounds logical to me.
Sounds logical. I mean, I think, I don't know, I don't remember off the top of my head, but maybe Ralph does. I think they paid sixty grand for that property? For six acres back in the day? So, I mean, it's not like, I think they're gonna be getting that and then some uh, for the use of what they're gonna use. Um, I, I'm guessing Eddie, that a, a field's gonna cost somewhere in that range? Fifty grand, maybe? I mean, if our guys could do the excavating work, of course, that would save us tremendous amount of money there. But then you're going to fencing and uh and the dirt field and the infield, right? So
Field mix is because there's any softball field, so
You gotta put rock, you gotta put some drain in, you gotta be, so, and a softball field, right, is all skin?
Skin infield, yeah.
It's no grass in the infield, so it's just all flat. Uh, so it's the easiest field to actually build.
It's all posh, right? You have to find out what the posh is, right?
I mean, he did give us, you know, he did give us an off the cuff price. He thought that this building would be, right? Would be around Would be around one point two, one, one point two-five million. Um, you don't know if that's accurate or not, right? You're just, he's just as, his, a professional opinion right now? That's what he's saying.
It's like two hundred a square foot?
Something like that.
Yep.
So, he, you know, from the, he says, you know, it all depends on how much we could do within-house, like, as far as excavating and things of that nature. If we could do more of that in-house, of course, that's gonna save tremendous amount of labor, right? If our guys could dig out the foundation and our guys could do this, the field and, which we have the equipment to do, it's gonna, it's gonna save on cost. So, maybe you get that down to one million, I don't know. And we have some monies already, right? So, again, that's what we have. We'll get it back to Phil. We don't wanna keep going. I think you guys, uh, have some good feedback. As I think Howard, like I said, I think that would be a good thing with, like, we told him originally, put some foundation, uh, yeah, something.
And also what Ed suggested, see if we could get something like divide.
Divide if some of the others.
Now, that probably costs some money.
Yeah, that's gonna, I mean, structurally, uh.
Because now, but we'll ask.
Ask.
Because that, now you gotta put headers all the way across the cement.
Yes.
Yeah, it's gonna be some, but we could ask, right? It's a good idea. Alright, thank you.
It's all your money.
It's all your money.
Don't say that.
We're trying to be responsible.
Hey, Al, if I could just add one more quick topic?
Sure.
I wanted to let the other board members know about the status of the Route nine W corridor study and the meeting you and I went to early, last week. And basically let you know that, um, the consultant has done some more work and basically decided that, from the consultant's viewpoint, that the volumes of traffic indicate that there's really not a need for four lanes on nine W and that, uh, the, in their opinion, a reconfiguration could be done, a road diet, taking the four lanes down to two with turning lanes where appropriate and so forth. Now, that was the, the consultant's opinion. They haven't completed the study and the DOT really hasn't seen the results yet. The DOT was at this meeting we had with the consultant and Dennis Doyle and Al and I were there. So, that's, and the consultant showed the entire four lane section, uh, dieted down to two lanes with wider shoulders and appropriate turning lanes where they thought they should be and so forth. So, that's something the DOT has to look at and give their opinion on, and Dennis Doyle did an impassioned speech saying, yeah, the DOT, we've done all this work. Now, we have to figure out some way to try to do, do some of the recommendations out of this study. I mean, there's, there's at least forty recommendations, but the, the big one is the reconfiguration and taking four lanes down to two in, in, uh, where appropriate. So, we hope that they listened. The problem with the DOT is that it's a revolving door, the same, not the same people are there any, any two meetings in a row. So, we have a whole new crew of people that have come on board that are trying to, uh, learn what's been done over the last year or so. Anyway, uh, it is moving forward. It was nice to see the layout, and I think you have the maps.
I have them upstairs in the office.
Yeah, so if you wanna look at what they're suggesting, they're kinda hard to decipher, but at this point, but what they're suggesting in terms of two lanes and wider shoulders and turning lanes and so forth, so.
Some spots they had shoulders were too wide that they could actually, uh, they were gonna change that, so. And also, just an update, uh, we are going to apply for the TAP. Uh, we were, it was suggested by the county, uh, to do the TAP. And the county has also talked to, uh, the DOT suggesting that the town is willing to do the TAP, but the town is not willing to, uh, deal with, uh, their row, their, uh, right-of-way. Uh, we, we are not in the, uh, business of taking people's land. Uh, that's the DOT's, uh, prerogative. They, if, uh, people are in the row with their, uh, so, uh, that being said, that, uh, we are gonna do the TAP. And when it, when we put in for easement, um, talking to a couple of people and engineers, we're just gonna put a, a very low, uh, amount there. Because, uh, one of the things they said, we had a good application, but we had easements of eighty thousand dollars. So, the DOT would like to start shovel-ready, like, have something done within two years, and easements take a long time. But talking to David, uh, from DOT Corrigan, uh, most of the stuff that we're looking at is in their row. And so Dennis Doyle was very adamant, telling the DOT, listen, this is your job. You should be doing this, actually. You should be actually doing this whole corridor, because the, the, uh, the, the way Dennis is looking at it and saying to the DOT, hey, you know what? Marlborough, the way the arrangements are, Western Avenue, nine W is not status quo, it shouldn't be the way it is. You should take care of it. So, that being said, I was pretty happy the way Dennis handled that.
He's very much a proponent for us.
Yeah, so he's on board finally.
He's, he's doing a lot, trying to push Marlborough.
So.
And P, and the DOT to help Marlborough, let's put it that way. So, the TAP for those, though, you don't know, is the Transportation Alternative Program grant, and that's the sidewalk from the elementary school into Western Avenue.
Yeah.
On, in the Hamlet.
That's, uh, actually from, uh, Young's to Western Avenue. It goes up Western Avenue and there's a walkway, there's a bump out where the flagpole is. So, people could cross across there, be on the bump out, wait for cars to go, and then go across to King Street and then go to the library. That, that actually comes from the safe route to schools.
Exactly.
Whole thing.
Okay.
Just one question. I know I've worked prolonged, but Dennis, you said Dennis, what, are we any, anywhere close to a bid for the sewer expansion?
No, he's, uh, doing DEC stuff and he's continuing. Actually, uh, last time I checked with the two hundred and fifty thousand SCAR titles grant, it was at the final stage. It was at the financial. The lawyers looked at it and they said that usually takes a couple of months. It's been like a month, so I'm expecting that contract. But Dennis is working, uh, looking at DEC permits and talking DOT because it's gonna be in their, in their row. So, he, he's done a lot of work already, so basically as soon as I get the contract, it'll be hitting the ground.
Speaking of.
And he's completely done over here now, right?
Uh, he's, he's completely done, but he has to do a walkthrough because there's some issues with the contractor not following their obligation as far as taking a cu- care of a couple of things on Mr. Santora's property there. So, that walkthrough will be in, I think, this week.
Okay.
So, that being said, I mean, we hold back, we held back around eight grand.
Yep. Speaking of the DEC, Al, there, there was this letter regarding the inspection of our sewage treatment plant. Tony's aware of this and we're gonna address this?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
And here we are, correspondence. So, like I said, Joe Troncoli, he, uh, he's written to myself and the town board suggesting that he would still like to be on that, uh, board of assessment. So, I, I'd like to acknowledge his letter. And he also gave, uh, he's been on the board of assessment, uh, town boarding plan, member of chairman, town board assessment, two thousand and seven? Does that sound right? Joel's been on the, uh, board of, uh, assessment review since two thousand and seven to present. Uh, got a letter here from Chief Kukosa. Uh, basically, it's, uh, I'm writing today to advise the town of Marlborough Police Department that I will be resigning from the position of, as dispatcher affected two weeks from this date. And that's from Matthew Hart. So, good luck, Matthew. And, uh, what is he gonna be doing, chief, you know?
He is a SUNY Newt Bolts cop now.
Okay.
Wasn't he doing both at one time?
He, he was. He was just, he's so busy over there, he's so, so short-staffed, he wasn't able to give us the time. So, instead of burning a bridge and just keep calling out, he decided to, to resign for now and when things change, he, uh, might reapply.
So, I, I guess I need a motion to accept his resignation.
I'll make that motion.
Need a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Oh, yeah, um, this is a letter from, uh, the state of New York, uh, State Police. You know, we wrote them a letter about the, uh, Saint Mary's, uh, parking on nine W on the east side. And, uh, they said they're signing a supervisor member of my command to investigate and address your concern. This was dated July twelfth.
Okay.
After review of his or her findings, I will take any action deemed appropriate. You will be advised of the results. Good, good luck with that.
We try. I'm just seeing what the results look like.
So, if somebody didn't know what I was talking about, Saint Mary's has that parking area. If you're heading north, it's on the east side. And that's usually where, uh, the state troopers, uh, conduct their inspection for trucks and stuff like that. The town, I don't think the town feels that it's a bad thing to do. It's just, um, I don't know. We feel that maybe they could do it someplace else.
It's, it's, uh, some businessmen are complaining about it, but on, on the other hand, you know, we need to keep our vehicles safe, so it's a, it's a tough one.
And at this time, it's public comment. Anybody have any public comment? Uh, Ralph, could you step up to the podium, please?
You're not that far away.
You're not that far. State your name, make a brief.
I just wanna follow up on your big discussion with the, uh, recre- recreation community center building. When that was first brought up several months ago, we were talking about like ten thousand square feet. We were talking about having a facility where there would be like a meeting room for senior citizens or other organizations to use. And that there would be a large enough, uh, room to hold quite a number of people for a party that town residents could rent, the same, same as they do for the town park pavilion. Uh, my guess would be that that number with tables, chairs and what have you should be probably in the neighborhood of a hundred and fifty people. It would be a source of rental income during the winter months when the park isn't being rented out for functions. And the size of the kitchen that Scott quoted tonight, I'm gonna tell you, for any size function, is too small. I've worked at many functions, and if a church organization, say, wanted to use it for a roast beef dinner, uh, if it's similar to the size of the park's, uh, kitchen, it wouldn't be large enough to do a decent job on that kind of a dinner. So, I think you should go back to.
You're telling me the park kitchen is not big enough to do a roast beef dinner?
That's correct.
Okay.
Alright.
We only had them, had other events like that there before, but okay.
It, you could do it, but it's not convenient.
Oh, but you just said it couldn't be done. Now you said you can do it.
Alright, it, the layout of that one would have to be completely different. But, uh, again, now we're down to five thousand square feet, and it sounds like it's mainly to put in a gym. Uh, and it's not something that would be a source of other revenue for the town during the winter months, when this town has very few facilities that can hold a hundred and fifty people for a function.
So, you're giving us good input. We need to increase the size of the community room to a hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
There you go.
But again, the, the gymnasium could also be used for an event, just like you just talked about.
It could be.
Doesn't have to be in the community room. Where, 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 where did they have it before, Al? Where, where did they have it before they went to the high school? This room. This room, which is almost the size of that, is about the same size of that gymnasium.
Roast beef there you're talking about.
Okay, so there you go. There's your space.
But I, 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 I do, I do have concerns about the kitchen size. Maybe that needs to be addressed, Scott.
That's fine.
I just thought, you know, cooking lots of roast beef, you might have to have a couple of ovens.
We could address that.
Yeah, that's, that's just, that's just input, that's all.
Taking input from a guy that doesn't want it, that's the difference. That's, that's the difference.
Thank you, Ralph. Yes, Tim, please.
Uh, Tim Lawton, thank you for letting me see and copy of the plans. Is this something that I can keep or that I could keep, copy it? I can get a copy of it? Okay, alright.
Yeah, you can, you can frame it if you want.
The plant, the plant implies that this is built on a grade, but then, Scott, you said at one point this was all flat land, so, uh, I was concerned.
Which one are you talking about?
The flat land's where the softball field is gonna be.
The, where the, where the building is, where the building is, is actually flat land too.
Flat land, yeah.
Except as it goes down to the baseball field.
Gets low.
So, we wanted to work that in. We wanted to work this, the pitch of the property as it goes up, so we could utilize it, and that's why we put this underneath part. And then the top part, that's totally flat.
Different.
But we said, in order, so we, we, when we went to the property, we walked the property, we said it would be a shame to not utilize this underneath part.
I see that.
Of the ground, because you're kinda gonna make a walkway to go up anyway, so why not dig out that and put a fa- you know, put a bottom part on, underneath the community room and actually use it for storage? And we thought it was a good idea because we need storage, um.
No, I'm not arguing that at all. I'm not, I'm not.
But yeah, the top part is actually plateaued, and that's why actually we picked that spot.
I, when I first looked at it, I was concerned about there being stairs to get to the main level, and then I realized the parking lot's on the other side of the building.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Keeping in mind, the parking lot's on the other side of the building and senior citizens are a primary reason for building this building, I think you should reverse the entire top floor, so the gymnasium is on the east side and the other facilities are on the west side.
The reason you can't.
Closer to the parking lot, so that people accessing the building, particularly senior, senior citizens, don't have to walk all the way around.
But the reason you can't is because of the exact reason why we want the underground where it is, because the gymnasium has to be on a non-basement floor, has to be flat. So, if we put the gym on the other side, now you can't put that basement in on that side that you want.
Then you need to rethink the top floor.
Yeah.
You really do, because having, having the people walk.
There's no other way to do it.
Having the entrance set far from the parking lot, particularly in the winter months.
It's really not that far, Tim. It's really not that far. It's really not that far, and you can't do it the other way.
Just my recommendation, Scott.
I know, but I'm just saying from the pato, from the, uh, topography part of it.
Keep an open mind.
I am, but you can't do it the way you're asking.
I'm making a recommendation and asking you to rethink.
Without an expense, it's probably like a tremendous amount of money.
Asking you to rethink what you're looking at to make it much more usable for senior citizens, because right now it's not.
Tim.
The other thing I'd like to point out is that you have.
Wait a minute, I just wanna answer your question.
Okay.
Because we got a parking lot not even twenty-five feet from a building that goes to one opening door, okay? That goes to the community center. I, I don't understand what you're talking about. It's twenty-five feet. Do you see where the senior citizens walking to now?
I don't.
Okay, well, go down to, go down to the church and see the, what they gotta get around.
What I do see.
With stumps coming out of the ground, rocks all over the place. Go down and see where they're going through now. They're gonna be on a Level eighty-eight compliant, um, um, walkway into a building. Trust me, it's a thousand times better than what you're doing. And what you're asking for, we can't do according to how we wanna lay this out with a basement. It just would not be feasible. There's no way to put that side on the other side, so I don't have to think about it anymore. It can't be done, because the way we're laying out the building is, you have to have a basement on the side where the, the ground is the topography the way it is. If you put it the other way, now you have to dig a, dig a hole to actually have a basement, which we don't wanna do. I mean, the way it lays out is the why the building has cost us so much, so much down. If you go it another way, you're talking maybe, you know, maybe another five hundred thousand dollars. So, the way it's laid out is laid out according to the topography.
I'm just voicing an opinion about the use of the building. I do happen to have an eighty-one-year-old mother-in-law who does walk with a walker, and having to walk that twenty-five feet to the entrance to the building in the wintertime is detrimental to her ability to use the building. Just my point.
I don't see where, I don't see where you're gonna pick it up anymore on the other side.
The other thing I wanted to point out is I think you're right about the bathrooms on the top floor. One bathroom's not enough. I think you should have multiple bathrooms, two at the very least, but also not men's and women's rooms, but all, all gender bathrooms. So that people don't have to stand in line and wait for one bathroom when the other one's potentially empty.
That's where, uh.
Yeah, we talked about.
Yeah, we talked about that earlier today. We talked about that today.
That's most new buildings have all-gender bathrooms.
Yeah, that's what they... And I just was recommending that. Will the plans for any new building be subject to public approval?
No. If it has to go for a gone, of course.
Okay, okay.
But not approval as far as what the final plan is. We approve the final plan. They have the final say if the...
The cost of the car.
Cost of the car.
Okay.
Yeah.
They don't have to prove the plans.
No, you don't have to prove the plan, but you have to prove the finance if we do.
All right. Also, if the school was to grant the property to the town for the purpose of building this in exchange for a softball field, is there going to be any investigation as to the cost of building the softball field on paper prior to doing that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Everything will be transparent.
Thank you.
I'll make you believe I don't see this here.
Thanks very much.
Good suggestion. Thank you. Good suggestion. James?
I'd like to hit a couple of different topics. James, you're a follow. One is perhaps after the plan goes to the school district and comes back, maybe it could be put on the website for everyone to see and make comments. I don't know if I would do that yet.
No.
Because you have enough changes to make. I would do it later.
We're not going to, yeah.
Okay?
Thank you for that suggestion.
We're not there yet.
Yeah.
It's going to be a while.
Yeah, exactly. But I hope eventually it will be there.
Yeah.
The second thing is with regard to Route 9W, one of the things I've always suggested is that you have at least one area where you can pass in each direction, maybe not in the same place, but somewhere in Marlborough, because there is no place to pass from Marlborough all the way down to 84 and almost all the way, partway up into Lloyd. You can pass, but you're passing in the same lane, and with the traffic, it's not easy.
They have passing lanes. There are passing lanes on both sides.
They left them in. Good. The second thing is...
You're on number three now.
Yes. I'm on number three.
James.
Do any of the changes in the local laws have to be referred to the planning board? I know you've had meetings with them.
I just said that. I just said that in the beginning. All the zoning changes have to go to the planning board.
After the Austin County Planning Board.
That's why we're delaying, because we haven't had a meeting yet.
Yeah, that's why...
Okay. In respect to the introduction of the road law, I just had a question hopefully you can answer, as to what this means to existing private roads which are not consistent with the law. What does that mean to the people living on those private roads if they want to do something in the future? Is that going to be a problem for those people?
Private road, anybody on a private road now? Right? If they have a private road and you want to upgrade it, it's up to the person who owns the private road. There's usually one person who owns a private road and has to have everybody else buy into the concept of fixing the private road. That's the whole problem about private roads. So, if there's four, five, six houses, if there are five houses on a private road, right? And the individual who owns the road goes to those other five or four houses and say, "I want to blacktop it," he has to get them to buy into the cost of how that's going to be distributed. And usually, that's where lies the problem, because the guy on the bottom doesn't want to chip in.
Right.
But the guy on the top, yeah.
But if, let's say, you have a private road, and you have someone who owns an empty lot, maybe it's in the middle of it, is that going to cause a problem for him to develop that lot if there is more than the four or six lots on that private road?
Not if it was approved as a subdivision, right, Tom? If it's an approved subdivision, he can go ahead and do it. But if it's not, it's coming in new, he can't do it.
Subdivision would have been approved by the law.
Right.
So, it was approved 10 years ago, it would have been approved under this exact same law, it would have been approved...
Five years ago.
Right, but now... Two years ago, it would have been approved under the current law and the planning board would have discretion under the existing law.
But now, if he tries to subdivide there over that amount, he can't. It's done now.
Existing lot that exists on the private road, continue to use as a dock and find it. Somebody could take additional lots in that...
That's what I'm... You can't. You can't.
And they would be...
That's what I'm...
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
So, that's your question, right?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Chief, you got a question?
You're welcome.
Just got the answers, right?
Any more public comment? Great discussion. Appreciate it. Let's go on to the resolutions. And so, Resolution 55, to introduce local law of the year 2018, amending section 130-14-16-8, private roads. So, basically, we're going back to the way we had it before different previous administrations changed it. Basically, what was changed was it was up to the discretion of the planning board, how many houses could be on a private road, which meant that it could be limitless. I mean, it could be, you could have a development on a private road. And our code enforcer, and I agree, and the town board agrees, that we should change it back to be, let me see if I get this right, four on a private road, six if you're adjacent to a main road. You could have those two either. So, I think that's more than... So, that's the Resolution 55 to introduce that local law. As you could see, we crossed out a lot of stuff and went back to the old way. And so, with that law, and also, we made provisions about private roads as pre-existing. And so...
We're just talking about public hearing for that, right?
Yeah, so, basically, we're going to set up a public hearing. We saw that a public hearing is held in relation to the purpose, changes that set forth to form a notice hearing, and after provided, at which hearing parties in interest and citizens shall have an opportunity to be heard, to be held at the Town Hall, 21 Milton Turpark, Milton, New York, on August the 13th. That's in August at 7:00 prevailing time. And that notice of said meeting shall be published in the official newspaper with general circulation in the Town of Marlborough by the town clerk at least 10 days before such hearing, and that such notice shall be in the same or similar following form. So, that's that. And we had the notice of public hearing, so that's the introduction of the law. So, Danielle, could you pull the board on that law?
For your proposing, I just got a second for the actual...
Yeah, so we do it differently. So, Ed, do you want to propose the resolution on that?
I would propose a resolution to have the public hearing.
And a second by a councilman?
Second.
All right. So, that's Ed, and then second by Councilman Baker.
Baker?
Baker? You sure? You know, the older you get, I love it. People anticipate what you're going to say. They don't give you... Now, it's down to milliseconds, you know? Before, there used to be a couple of seconds. "I'm having a problem here."
Well, that's what happens.
Okay.
Supervisor Lanza?
Yes.
Pastor Mullinelli?
Yes.
Pastor Corcoran?
Yes.
Pastor Baker?
Yes.
Did you say yes?
Uh-huh. You were hesitating.
Were you sleeping?
No, I'm still not 100% sure about taking that one part out of the law.
I was thinking about it.
I'm going to move forward with it for now. If we still see issues, though, keep telling us.
Yeah, what's going on?
Because it's not too hard to amend this.
Don't worry.
You will.
Oh, boy. Careful what you ask for.
So, and this is Resolution 58, to adopt local law number three of the year 2018, amending section 67-4B. And this is the thing that Tom suggested we take out, the construction of installation of one-story detached structures associated with one or two family dwellings.
Thanks, Doc.
Took a while, but we got there. Or multiple single dwelling. The reason we did that is because people were interpreting that you could have a shed without a permit, right, Tom?
Correct.
So, we took that out, so there's no ambiguity in that. So, we're adopting that law. And Danielle, could you pull the board, please?
Pastor Mullinelli?
Yes.
Pastor Corcoran?
Yes.
Pastor Baker?
Yes.
Did you say yes?
Uh-huh. You were hesitating.
Were you sleeping?
No, I'm still not 100% sure about taking that one part out of the law.
I was thinking about it.
I'm going to move forward with it for now. If we still see issues, though, keep telling us.
Yeah, what's going on?
Because it's not too hard to amend this.
Don't worry.
Don't worry. You will.
Oh, boy. Careful what you ask for.
So, and this is Resolution 58, to adopt local law number three of the year 2018, amending section 67-4B. And this is the thing that Tom suggested we take out, the construction of installation of one-story detached structures associated with one or two family dwellings.
Thanks, Doc.
Took a while, but we got there. Or multiple single dwelling. The reason we did that is because people were interpreting that you could have a shed without a permit, right, Tom?
Correct.
So, we took that out, so there's no ambiguity in that. So, we're adopting that law. And Danielle, could you pull the board, please?
Pastor Mullinelli?
Yes.
Pastor Mullinelli?
Yes.
Pastor Corcoran?
Yes.
Pastor Baker?
Yes.
The next Resolution 59, to authorize the town to pursue a bond to cover critical funding for projects that will revitalize our hamlets as recommended in our local waterfront revitalization program project. Whereas, Town Supervisor Lanza proposes the following, whereas the Town of Marlborough is currently pursuing multiple grants from multiple granting agencies for Milton Pier reconstruction, implementation of the landscaping plans for the upper and lower portion of the Milton Landing Park, and the sidewalk along Western Avenue's side, western side of Route 9W from Marlborough Elementary School to the center of the hamlet of Marlborough at Western Avenue. And whereas, it is anticipated that the grants will not cover the full amount of the funding needed for these projects necessitating the need for town-based funding. Therefore, be resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Marlborough should exercise its authority to procure a bond of bonds to cover the funding shortfall, not to exceed[1771.45]